Call this meeting in order, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation for the Blues and Bikes Festival. Whereas Memorial Weekend, May 22nd to the 24th, 2015, marks the 20th anniversary of the Memorious Region Arts Council Silver City Blues Festival. And whereas the Memorious Region Arts Council's Silver City Blues Festival celebrates the 20th anniversary with a new name, Silver City Blues and Bikes Festival. And whereas, the Silver City Blues and Bikes Festival will include a third day of motorcycle-related activities on Friday, May 22nd, 2015. And whereas, Blues Hall of Famer, Lifetime Achievement, and two-time Grammy Award winner, Taj Mahal, will headline the festival Saturday night, May 23rd, 2015. And whereas, the Silver City Blues and Bikes Festival events will include People's Choice Bike Show, 50-plus vendors, a Gila Wilderness Bike Run, custom bike builders, and other high-quality bike-themed vendors. And whereas, the festival will host a diverse array of artisans from across the region. And whereas, the Silver City and Blues and Bikes Festival expects approximately 10,000 in attendance. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim Memorial Weekend, May 22nd to the 24th, 2015, as the 20th anniversary of the Silver City Blues and Bikes Festival.
Thank you, Mike. Susan. Yeah, thanks. On behalf of the Members Region Arts Council, I just want to thank town councilors, mayor, and most of all, the city staff, for all the support that you've given us over 20 years. It's really been a big factor in the success that the festival has become, and we just want to thank you. Have a little token of our thanks to give out. Okay?
It's a nice hat. Thank you, babe. Nobody signed up for public input, so next item is council comments. Counselor Connor, would you like to begin?
First of all, I attended the downtown Criterium of the Tour de la Gila, and I hadn't been to one of those in about five years, so I was very, very impressed with the level of precision by the entire crew that works on the Tour de la Gila. And I just wanted to publicly thank Jack Brennan and Michelle Gilson, their crew, for what they've done. It's been 29 years, and it's a wild oil machine at this point, so it's really, really nice to watch. Also during the community, the citizens' race, just seeing all the members of the community from different walks of life there together was really nice. So I've also met with the public library staff, and they would just like us to remind the public that they are doing a survey at this point. It is until around, I think it's around June 1st that they're going to be doing that. And it can be found on the town website under the library tab, so if you would please go and do that survey, we'd really appreciate it. And then, the next thing is, I'm just going to ask for Chief Reynolds to hopefully join us in the mic over here and explain a little bit about bicycle safety. And the main one that I'm asking for is for you to talk about rules of being on a bike in traffic, because we've had some concerns about that unrelated to what I'm sure we're all going to discuss after that.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just as a reminder for the public, bicyclists are supposed to adhere to the rules of the road just like motor vehicles. In other words, you're supposed to be riding on the right side of the road as traffic flows the same direction, supposed to be stopping at stop signs and traffic lights. So my understanding is, I got a complaint a couple of days ago, bicyclist ran the red light at Bullard and Broadway and almost got hit. So that would have been their fault in that crash if that would have happened, plus they probably would have been injured as well. So again, it's imperative that everybody shares the road, and everybody obeys the rules of the road as well. Thank you.
Clearly, all of us have Dr. Robinson on our mind at this point, so I would just ask the town to continue to send good thoughts and prayers his way. I know that he's recovering slowly but surely, so hopefully that will continue. Also, I would like to, I know this is his last week in town, so I would just like to extend a goodbye and best wishes to the editor of the Daily Press, Avellino Mestes, who will be leaving us in a few days to reunite with his fiancee, so I wish you the best of luck in what you do next. And the last thing is, I would ask Ms. Mackey if she would just give us kind of a brief description of how you get on the agenda for town council meetings, because there have been some requests from some of the public, and they're not really sure how to do it, so if they could watch it on CAPS and they know how to do that.
Yes, Counselor Connor, I'd be happy to answer that question. To request an agenda item, folks can go to our town website, go to the town council page, and the form to request an agenda item is there. Those forms can also be found at my office at City Hall. And they need to be turned in to me a week prior to the council meeting date at 10:00 a.m., that's the deadline. So last Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. was the deadline for this meeting. When I receive it, I look for the backup documents that need, that would apply to their request, and I route it through the town manager and our mayor for approval. Once I get their approval, I contact the requester and let them know that it was approved, and you know, we talk about the meeting. So that's basically it.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate you. You did one heck of a job for 20 years. Too bad that you're leaving, but I'm sure that the next person that's going to take over is going to do just as well. Your Bike Run, your Bike Festival, everything's going to be very, very well-attended this year. We thank you for that. Also, I want to congratulate Mr. the Chief Reynolds on having the police department personnel on bikes. They have been seen in a lot of different places, and one thing I want to congratulate you is that they stop at stop signs, which is, which is a welcome insight. Getting back to Counselor Connor's comment about the survey for the public library, there has been some schools that have taken some surveys and run them for several hours. And that is all. Be careful. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was reading the minutes of our previous council meeting in preparation for tonight, and saw that I had made in my comments a request that everyone drive carefully because there were going to be a lot of bicyclists out there. So it was pretty painful to, for the, all the families involved for the terrible crash. And we want to keep our prayers, keep going. So again, I'm going to request everyone in these great big vehicles that are heavier than bicycles to be especially watchful. And be really watchful during the Memorial Day and the Blues and Bikes Festival, because there's going to be bicycles and motorcycles all over. So let's be cautious and courteous to everyone on the road. I want to remind everyone that a few months ago, the town did put in a grant application to develop a bicycle master plan, and we were awarded only a portion of that grant, but we are going to be working with that portion and hopefully putting together some other grants to be able to create a master plan. This is not going to just be a dusty tome. We'll use this. We'll use it to develop infrastructure, we'll use it for educational processes, and we'll use it for enforcement, both for bicyclists and for motorists, about safe driving on the road. So it's actually an important step for our town in terms of all kinds of citizen safety. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bedesen?
Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, everyone. Today is National Fibromyalgia Awareness Day, and May is National Fibromyalgia Awareness Month. And I've asked my fellow elected officials and some staff members of the ribbons that I had done to join me in wearing these purple ribbons, ribbons which denote fibromyalgia awareness, and I appreciate them doing that. Over 10 million Americans are estimated to have fibromyalgia, and I am one of them. On this day and during the month of May, we strive collectively to make visible fibromyalgia. I was diagnosed at 19, but medical records indicate that I've had it all my life. Fibromyalgia is real. It's a chronic medical disorder just like diabetes, hypertension, and asthma. It's a central nervous system disorder characterized by profound, chronic, widespread pain, moderate to severe fatigue, sleep disorders, IBS, headaches, migraines, and a host of associated overlapping symptoms and conditions. Recent research has suggested a genetic component and an association with autoimmune diseases. So I would ask, because you may not know that the person sitting next to you has this disease, it is quite invisible to people unless they so say so. So please go to fmaware.org to find out more about fibromyalgia, and what people with fibromyalgia experience on a daily basis, the challenges they face, and how you can help. And I really would ask anyone who has a grandchild, or a niece, or nephew, or child who says, mommy, or daddy, my skin hurts, or anything like that, or the doctor has said that they are experiencing groin pains, to really have that assessed, because what they now call juvenile fibromyalgia, which is the same thing as adult fibromyalgia, is real as well. And they too can only, they too have it, but they can only voice it the way I did when I was young. My skin hurts, because there's no other way to describe it when you're little. So I want to thank everyone again for wearing the ribbons and joining me in making this public, and really increasing the awareness and making visible fibromyalgia. I also want to congratulate Lolly Toyota and Gila Hike 'em Bike for receiving two out of the four Sunny Brown Business Awards. This is an award that is given by Rotary District 5520, and it's based on the four-way test, whether businesses and their dealings with their customers, and with the community and their service, if they follow the four-way test. And I have to tell you, it is incredibly competitive. It is both New Mexico clubs and West Texas clubs. Over 60-plus clubs can put in a nomination for each one of the four. They're different sort of categories. And to have two of our local businesses recognized that way this year is incredibly impressive. And today at Rotary, we presented it to them, because the actual presentation occurred during the Tour de la Gila, at the Rotary District Conference. So it is, it truly is a statement as to what these two businesses do for our community, and how they, they treat not only our community, but also their customers and their employees. It has to go all the way through everything that they do. So I just, once again, congratulate them for these very prestigious awards that they received today at our Rotary Club meeting. And the last thing I'd like to do is remind folks that if you are stopped at the intersection of Juniper, Silver Heights, and Highway 180, especially if you are on the Juniper side, please make sure you're in the correct lane for the arrows. The right lane goes right only now, and then there's a new left lane that was painted that goes straight, because in the past several weeks when I've been around, I've noticed near accidents as the person in the right lane goes straight. So just be aware that it's been over a month, like a month and a half, since they painted that intersection. Just be aware that there's changes on several of our intersections in town, and be mindful that, that there are other people expecting to go straight when you're trying to go straight from the right-hand lane. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to start off on a light note. Since the last meeting, I had the pleasure of giving former Senator Jeff Bingham the key to the town, and it was, it was a nice little gesture. But as I, as I did that, I started to dwell on the fact that we haven't done more. You know, when you look at a person who has contributed to our town, our state, and our country, to the level that he has, and the fact that we, we haven't given him greater recognition, in a sad sort of way, is a little embarrassing. And, and I would like to just encourage us to, to brainstorm and start to consider ways that we could do a little bit more recognition for, for former Senator. Some ideas, I've tossed this around and thought out loud with a number of people, and a couple of ideas that have already percolated, and I'd like for everybody to, to think about them, is, you know, renaming our Office of Sustainability the, the Binghamman Office of Sustainability, or the Binghamman Office of Innovations, or, or something to that effect. Even as our town progresses, and if we even develop that, that parcel even more, and put different buildings even potentially, you know, there's the idea of a town hall or something, the, the idea of the Binghamman Office of Innovations would, would suffice on, on a number of different things. So I, I think it would be appropriate. He's always presented himself as a very humble man, and he would never ask or point this out, and might even be a little reluctant to have that happen, but it's, it's appropriate. And I think we need to consider that. On another note, and it's still fairly, a fairly light note, you know, I, one of the things I try to do, sorry about that, is I try to appreciate all of our partners in, in moving Silver City forward, you know. I see we have Main Street represented, we always, and Imrec represented, and a number of people who continuously contribute to our, our success. And one of those partners has probably been a little underappreciated, and very pointedly so, is the Department of Transportation. You know, the Department of Transportation maintains Highway 180, Highway 90, Highway 15, 152. They do tremendous amount of work and tremendous investments in our community. They employ a, a number of our citizens and pay well in maintaining our, our stuff. The, the department has a number of grants. I know that we've been the recipient of several of them, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, recreational trails program, I believe we've received some things from the TAP program. And they have other, other granting opportunities that we could seize, and they've been putting money in, into our area, and they've been, for lack of a better way, a little beat-up of recent. And, you know, we, we always have to think about the fact that, as part of any, as part of any partnership, constructive criticism is important. We do need to convey our concerns and our thoughts and give ideas, but as we're doing that, we also need to sit back and temper that with the fact that these are our partners trying to do good work for us and, and improve our infrastructure for, for the future. And I just want to, you know, remind everybody of that, and allow, and also hopefully allow the department to, to understand that we do really appreciate the, the investment that they do and, and the hard work that they do on a continuous basis. And, and remind people that they have been making some, some recent efforts to, to inform us. I know that they've invited Peter to our, to their weekly meetings, I believe, and, and it's an opportunity for us to give some of that constructive criticism, or thoughts, or ideas, and pass them on. I think one of the, the biggest concerns at this point is still the bypass and how we need to do that, and we can suggest that Peter continue to, to push some of our thoughts and concerns in that area. But remember that they are, one of our, from a state agency standpoint, one of the few state agencies that really is contributing to our area. So, so we don't want to alienate them by any stretch of the imagination. We don't want to make Alex and his staff's jobs more difficult by beating up on our partners. So hopefully, we, we just remember that. And also, many of those concerns, we may even be inappropriately applied, not totally, but what I mean by that is, some of our concerns are really, we need to take some personal responsibility and ownership in that, and, and make ourselves a little safer. And this not only plays to some of the traffic issues that we're going to be facing here, but also with the recent events with Dr. Robinson and those potential incidences. You know, I was, before this weekend, I was looking forward to commenting on what I saw during the bike race, which was, people really were driving a little slower, they were showing some, some genuine concern for bicyclists, giving them a wide berth, using their turn signals, and I was really pleased with that. And it kind of got undermined in a huge way with, with one accident. But taking that incident and, and also applying it to some of these routes on, on the bypass, the personal responsibility we need to take is, we all need to drive slower, drive more carefully, more defensively. We need to use our signals, and we need to be responsible for our own personal safety and, and do our own due diligence to, to help out to everybody else. And that being said, I'm, anybody ready for round two? Counselor Bedesen?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, having been out of town for quite some time, I have to say that I was really pleased to see some of the suggested changes implemented. I'm really glad that they took down the sign that was in front of, the electronic one, that's one, and it's a clear view, everyone can see it, and I think they can still put up the smaller sign, I think that talks about the work they're doing. I'm not sure if they've put it up or not, but I appreciate the fact that they listen to some current concerns that folks had expressed about not being able to see around the stationary signs, so.
We've been on numerous occasions, and a lot of those smaller types of signage, types of things, they've taken, taken to heart, and some signage issues that we had discussed earlier, directional signing and stuff like that, they've looked at, they're putting it out to pushing towards downtown. Some of those other, other things like the one you're talking about, being in the way, being confusing, those types of things, they're working on it. And as we've discussed, you know, this is going to be a fluid project. I mean, there may be changes from one week to the next, and, and we want to work closely with them to ensure that they work safe from both sides, that we both know exactly what's happening, and I, and I think we're both pretty much on the same page as far as that's concerned.
Coming in on Highway 90, like I did from Arizona, signage when I went through last week was, I thought, much better than, than what had been there before, that they are actively listening, and I, I actually thought that it was really well-done, and I noticed the historic signs that I don't know if Peter put up, but to go to historic downtown, that they're visible, they're there, it's, I think that, as the mayor said, the partnership will work, but there'll always be folks that'll be concerned about their particular things. And I think, we'll just see how it goes, and I know everybody's anxious for it to begin. And when I, I was out of town, and I received the email that it had been delayed, but it was delayed for a good reason, and, and I think that when it's all said and done, it'll be, I mean, it'll be a beautiful bridge, with lights and pedestrian walkway, and you know, bike lanes. I mean, I'm, I think everybody will appreciate it when it's all said and done, it's just that, you know, trying to get everything organized and trying to get things going sometimes gets people a little riled up. And I just wanted to comment on what the, the mayor said about former Senator Bingham. You know, naming either one of those offices that way, or maybe the Office of Sustainability and Innovation, fits quite in line with all the memorabilia that we, that's up at Western New Mexico University Museum, where that's really, I mean, he was an environmentalist, he was about sustainability and about innovation, and he quietly, behind the scenes, did so much work, and like you said, he's a very humble man, and would never ask for it, and so it's always kind of shocking when we realize that, you know, what a fantastic job that he's done, our former legislators in the state that have been here in the area, our current legislators, and I think that, as much as we can, to thank them for all their work, and also legislators that are nearby that assist the town, I think that we need to do more recognition in the long run of, of all that work that they do for us, because we've gotten some wonderful things, and we have wonderful people that have lived here or that have watched out for all of us all these years, so I thought that was a really wonderful suggestion. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. One more thing that I wanted to mention was that we should congratulate Jack also for having the Tour de la Gila. Let's not forget that it was well-attended, very well-attended. Thank you.
Here we ask you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 23rd, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion stated.
We have a motion second for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, April 23rd, 2015. Is there any discussion? We have a motion second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
So I want to explain the budget process a little bit. Basically, what, what happens during, during the years, I work with the department, the departments to establish their, their budgets. Anita and I work together to put the actual budget together. I, I generate the, the revenue projections throughout, throughout, for the next year. And part of that process requires that we have budget hearings, which are mainly these reporting, reports that we've been giving you for, for the last few months. The preliminary budget, which is sent to Sanifit, is required to be there by the end of May. It does not have to be approved by you, but we always do bring it to be approved by you. And what we have today is, is basically what we're going to present to you at our next council meeting, unless you give us direction to change it in some way. And it, and it's made up of different, many different parts. The main operational part of the budget is the general fund, where most of our taxes go into, and we provide most of our services from. Then we have our enterprise funds, which is the sanitation, the water sewer and wastewater fund. And then we have capital funds, revenue, special revenue funds, trust and agencies, which is basically pass-through funds, debt service, that's it, that's it.
Right.
Yeah. And, and basically, some of the funds like capital, those are some of, a lot of the grant funds, that's the majority of the grant funds, which are, are big projects that, that we're bringing in. Special revenue are different types of special revenues that we receive, such as fire protection, lodgers tax, gas tax, those types of funds that are, are actually used for town purposes, but come from, and are specialized for certain- but come from and are specialized for certain use. And so with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about where we're at in the general fund. We're looking, as you know, we increased grocery receipts taxes by a quarter of a percent. We are going to send out a mailing to all of those individuals with the business permit here within this next, with the next couple of weeks. We learned that after the county passed theirs, that we had so many people come to us that didn't know that the tax had gone up. So we're going to send a letter directly to the businesses that are registered in town. And so with the documentation I showed you in there, basically, the local share of grocery receipts taxes going up 15%. It should have gone with that quarter percent, it should have gone up about 18% because of hold harmless. It decreased that by 3%. So we subtracted out the first blow of hold harmless out of that. And so total grocery receipts taxes is going up, I believe it was 4.2% total. Okay? And then we've looked at, you've got a summary of each one of the individual departments in the general fund. We gave you a new version because it's what we gave you earlier. It wasn't copied over correctly, so some of the percentages and numbers were incorrect. But if you look at legislative, it's actually budgeted 2% decrease, and that's because the cost to do the elections is actually less because of the single voting center. The judicial is going up, is budgeted to go up 10%. And actually, almost all of the increases, operational costs from almost all of the departments stayed at zero. There was no increase to any of the operational costs in any of the departments. Almost everything was based because of cost of living increases and insurance. This one went up a little bit more because the judge requested additional funding for an alternate judge, so that's included. But as the year progresses, we'll look at the operations of each of the departments and see what needs to be done at that point. The executive department, as I told you earlier, last fiscal year, is that some of the personnel costs had been moved over to the water sewer and sanitation fund. Basically, this is moving the assistant managers position back and some of our percentages over to the general fund. So that's why this one is so big. We're moving them back, and then we've got cost of living, and I don't really think there's any insurance. Well, insurance did go up 3%, so there is some insurance increases in there. Then we've got general costs, that's basically inflation, workers' comp, liability insurance. Then you've got utilities. We've also got in there an increase for Corre Caminos, because the cost is going to increase, but we are in negotiations with county to see where that ends up at. And then, as you go down, everything else is pretty much 1% to 4%, either negative or positive. The only one that has increased is the city shop, 17%. But that's because we added one position to that, and it's because of all of our older equipment. We've hired a mechanics helper who will do, focus primarily on oil changes and other things like that, so that way our mechanics can focus on actually fixing the equipment. We did discuss, based on the way things are going now, at the beginning of next fiscal year, we will fill the unfilled positions that are at the library. We will also, we have included in this year's budget, we've got four temporarys for the parks and city shop, not city shop, but streets department that they share. And those are, that is included in the general costs, and we'll actually increase that to eight, because there's so much additional work from all the different events during all the summer. And that's only seasonal. That goes from about March through September, October, depends on the weather. So that's where we're at with the general fund. And with that, then we have these, do you have any questions?
Thank you, I didn't want to move on until I asked a couple of questions. So one question I have is, in the police section, there was a 46% over last year in other wages. What are other wages?
They're longevity pay.
Okay.
And even though it's a 46% increase, we, it's not a big dollar amount.
Right. No, I noticed that.
That's why it shows as a big percentage amount.
Yes, I was just wondering if that's what it was. I didn't, I mean, some of the other things you brought up, I pretty much figured out because we had talked about the fact that we would make sure that the library positions, you know, were brought back and that also in streets and the parks. So you mentioned that there was a 2% decrease in the cost of the elections because of the centralized voting convenience center at the Sub City Women's Club, that we actually did get a savings, cost savings?
Well, we did a cost saving because we don't have to have the different locations anymore. We just have one. It's still cost close to the same amount. And part of it is your travel, it's everything that's attributed to what you're doing. And it's based on what's happened this year compared to what we budgeted in previous years. And so it's between travel and the voting, but the majority of the costs in legislative is voting. And advertising for all the legal ads.
Right.
It's a small budget, so any change has a big percentage change.
Well, I was just trying to find out if we'd actually saved some funding, funds from moving towards the, which we weren't sure we would with the voting convenience center.
It's all the same, but, you know, it's...
It's not, it's really not as much of a savings as one might think it would be.
No, but it's a lot more convenient because you have to remember one place to go.
Right. And then, it's just probably me, because I went through it a couple of times, where does it say specifically hold harmless? Because it's not the state share.
No, it's the local share.
Okay, so that's, okay. I was trying to figure out, I'm looking for the name, hold harmless, rather than the local share.
Yeah, it's not, it's the majority of, I took it out of the local share.
Okay.
I mean, it's across the board, all of them. So it hits the local share, the state share, and then you'll see another piece in the sanitation fund, which is the grocery receipts there.
Right.
And I just put, applied it all to the local share because it was easier to offset it there at one point, rather than trying to split it up all the different increments, since the majority of the increments is the local share.
Well, thank you, because that, you know, when the budget's available for folks to look at, they'll be able to understand that that's where it is.
If you want to see it detailed, I've actually got the worksheet that I created to show it, how it came up.
And maybe something that we may want to look at, and maybe even making sure that the public understands that it does begin July 1, and we do have a reduction beginning July 1 of this year. So it might be something for them to visually be able to see.
I can show it, it's a public record wherever you want.
Great. I would appreciate it.
I can share it with you at the next meeting, I can give it to you so you can see it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Those are all the questions I have on the general fund.
Okay. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, I only have one question, Mr. Brown, and that is on, in the general fund on utilities, which seem to have increased, or be projected to increase a lot this year, this coming year. Any particular reasoning for that? And is there anything that we could do to offset that by energy efficiency activity or anything like that?
Overall, the total amount of utility costs have actually sort of stayed the same or declined a little bit. But as we've been adjusting our builds, because we get summary builds, one for the lights and the general buildings, and then we get for like the wastewater treatment plant, and as we adjust all those things and we see some of those things fixed, right, it moves from sanitation or water sewer into general right now, as it's more of a house cleaning thing, since the overall cost is actually the same or even less. And actually, when you look at the water sewer fund, it's actually decreased over there. So that's where it's decreased, because they were subsidizing the general fund a little bit.
I understand that we sure have had to decrease our sum effect at the wastewater treatment plant because of capital infrastructure that was taken to sew or away and stuff like that. I just was really curious, because it went up, the projected, compared to last year's budget was substantial, and I was just curious about that. You're saying it's really, it's an artifact perhaps of gathering actuals together and then taking a projection from the actuals for a more centralized function next year?
Yes, we're putting more of it, the bills are being corrected over years because we used to pay each individual bill, and then we went to a summary bill, and then the summary bill didn't have, they weren't summarized exactly, split up to the departments that they should have been. So now that they're being cleared up more, then it's being applied more to the fund that it actually applies to.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions so far?
Okay, the capital fund summary that you'll see has all the budgeted, there's a summary page in there that has all the grant projects that we'll be working on next year. Do you have any questions on that? And we don't have, there's a few grants that we have outstanding that we haven't actually been awarded, that may be on the final budget or even on the preliminary budget, depends on what happens over the next few weeks that we put in there. So that will only change in that fact.
Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So a quick question, and I'm not sure if it relates directly, but since there's grants and things. In the recent Colonia's meeting that was held here, I know that we are now able to use up to the full amount of the original award for Silver Street.
Yes.
But the question is, wasn't there $16 million of projects on the table that did not?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, that may be done by the, actually, it won't be done by the time we have to submit it.
Right.
But it will be done before the final budget. So it will be in the final budget, whatever we get, because if you saw what was recommended...
Yes.
We would have received two additional grants, which is 1.5 million. That would be included in our final budget. But because it hasn't been awarded yet, and because, you know, you saw what I had to go through during that meeting, that...
Yes, I did. And I would like to publicly state that I thought that not only did our engineer that was there, Mr. Escada, but also you, really did an excellent job of explaining that it wasn't new money, it was actually using the funds as we had already requested, that up to the 462?
Forty-nine.
Or 69?
Forty-six.
Okay, $1,000, because we had just passed that, and it was quite low, but I thought that despite one member of the committee, I thought you did an extremely good job of making a presentation. It was clear that the other voting members of the committee completely understood what we were requesting, which was not new monies, but actually the monies, all the monies that had been awarded to us. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Okay, and the next one would be special revenue. And there's many different types of special revenue, a lot of it's just grant pass-through type stuff, like J-JAC, but then there's others like fire protection, which is basically almost the operating budget for the fire department. And then you have law enforcement protection, and all of those are funded based on formulas. Then you've got gas tax, which, the actual gas tax that we've projected for next year has gone up a little bit, because even though the price of gas is lower, people drive more, use more gas, we get more cents per gallon. The same cents per gallon, but they use more gallons, we get more. And that's what we've been seeing. Okay? Then we've applied a portion of grocery receipts taxes to that, that's in there, and then the portion of property taxes that we dedicated last year. So we went from around 200 in the 260s up into, I believe it's 500 and some thousand dollars that are being budgeted for streets. Lodger's tax is, I'm projecting only a slight increase of 1.5 because I want to be conservative because of the bridge project. I don't know what's going to happen. Even in grocery receipts taxes, I actually was conservative. I didn't include construction dollars that are one-time during the project, I didn't include that. So all of that, hopefully, will be applied towards increasing our reserve, which was the initial intent of passing the grocery receipts tax. So with that, do you have any questions on the special revenue? The debt service is basically paying our debt, those are the loans and everything. The trust and agency are basically pass-throughs. Those are funds that we've, that we hold for others, governmental grocery receipts taxes, which we collect on your water bill, we hold, then we pay to the state. Then your water meter deposits, we're holding it in trust for you until we either return it to you in your water bill, or it's returned when you shut your water off, those types of things. So those are the trust and agency funds, and I believe that's it, except the enterprise funds. Do you have any questions on anything so far? Okay, Anita's going to go ahead and talk about the enterprise funds for you.
Okay, I gave you guys an Appendix A, which that will also be presented to you for approval next council meeting. And that is related to the sewer and wastewater fees. We will be recommending a 50 cent per gallon increase...
Per thousand gallon.
Per gallon?
Per thousand gallon.
Per thousand gallons, sorry. This one. Label it Appendix A.
We're required to pass it each year.
Like it? It's like I said, we'll be recommending a 50 cent increase per thousand gallon, increase to the sewer and wastewater. Originally, we were looking at a 30 cent increase, however, after evaluating our debt service, we're going to need a little bit more money in order to cover our debt, and a lot of that is related to our Colonia's projects. Our revenues, we're projecting 4% less than what was projected last year, and that projection is based on this year's actuals. Our expenditures, the primary changes are due to the cost of living increases, the increases in insurance, and also we've budgeted some capital expenditures for some much-needed equipment. So that's basically water sewer. I don't know if you have any questions.
Counselor Donna?
Yeah, kind of an average of how much people's rates are going to go up? I mean, I know you said 50 cent a gallon, but an average user, how much will that be? I mean, I know you said 50 cent a gallon, but an average user, how much will that be?
This is four, four, four so.
Two dollars?
No, it's actually be at $4, because it's 50 percent.
Okay, an average about $4.
Because there's no increase in the water rate?
Yeah, there will be no increase to the water rate, we're just looking at the sewer and the wastewater.
Thanks, Ms. Corfino.
Okay. The sanitation fund, the 3% annual increase that we, that was set by ordinance ended last fiscal year, and we are not recommending to, we're not proposing for it to continue. What we would like to request is that next fiscal year, the rates be adjusted annually according to the fund's need, kind of similar to how we do the, the water, sewer and wastewater. This year's revenues, we're projecting a 3%, more than last year's projections, which is more in line with what has been realized this fiscal year. Our expenditures overall, we're only seeing a 1%, we're seeing a 1% decrease, and that is due to the redistribution of personnel expenses going back to the general fund. The only increase in sanitation would be the capital, also for equipment. Any questions?
Counsel Spitzer?
Hey, so you said it was a 3% increase in the revenues, but the total revenues, it says it's a 2% increase. That was on the projections, on the sheet that you just gave us tonight.
That was general.
Yes, because the, the grocery receipts taxes and the, when you subtract the decrease in the grocery tax multiples, then it nets out to 2%.
Right, that's, yeah, because yes, the revenues are, the total revenues are down.
Yeah, she was, she was talking about the net, the, the actual user fees, not the grocery receipts and those other things that are included there.
Just checking.
And with that, also, we will be looking on the sanitation fund at the, the recycling, automated recycling. Okay? So if, if that does happen, our, I've, I've been working with the Solid Waste Authority since I sort of worked there a lot, too. We, we're looking at decreasing the recycling contract, that would, so I'm looking to offset our debt service, any debt service that we would accrue to buy the new truck and, and the carts by decreasing the recycling contract to the Solid Waste Authority, because we would take, take on that portion of the service for them. So there would really be no net expense for us. It would just be stopping the recycling part, part of the recycling contract and increasing debt service, so I could pay for that other stuff.
Counsel Spitzer?
So, I mean, right now, they're the ones that are going around and picking up the bins and throwing them in there, and if we get the, the same sort of, like, as like we've talked about in the past, you know, that the current trash pickup is, that then becomes the city picking it up, which is why you can decrease the...
Yes, because the way that the, the recycling contract works is, the recycling contract plus whatever they are able to sell, you know, recyclables, has to offset the cost of recycling operation.
Okay.
And so, we'll still be taking them at the recyclables that they can sell, then we will decrease the recycling contract so that we can collect it, and you, we're hoping to see an increase in recycling, so that'll decrease our tipping fees. So there's a big domino effect when it all sort of happens, and so there's a lot to think about, and there's some other things with the mining district, because they do collect their commercial recycling. And so, we got to try to work our way through, through that right now, and, and so, I want to get through this before I jump into that.
So in the long run, though, I mean, if we are able to do this, then it actually will benefit the citizens, because they can drop down, if, as they increase their recycling with the new bins, they can drop down to the smaller garbage one, which...
Which is a thing, because they're not charged for the recycling. They are charged for the, the tipping, the green, the blue one, they wouldn't be charged for the green one.
Right.
So they could decrease to the smaller one, if they're able to recycle more.
Right, which would save them monthly.
And, and the more we're get, we're able to get people to recycle, the less we actually pay to the landfill for tipping fees. So that saves us, the town in turn, and then it makes everything work together, increases the life of the landfill, it, it does a whole bunch of different things.
Right, the last, the, we have to, the number of cells we would have to open up also decreases, which decreases the overall cost, so it's a, it's a nice sort of progression if, if we can work it out, and I encourage folks to increase their recycling with new bins when, when we get to the point where we're getting them, so, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
Uh, no, with that, is there anything that you would like us to bring in addition next council meeting, when we have you adopted? Because we will bring, oh, wait, there is one thing that Anita didn't mention, an appendix A, it's something new. We have an additional fee that we would like to charge, is a credit card usage fee, because we're charged 5% of everything that you charge on your card. So if you pay your water bill, your utility bill, and it's $100, we're charged $5 for you using the card. We would just at least like to offset it by 3, 3% of that 5, 5%, because last, last year, it was $47,000 we were charged for that credit card, for the use of the credit card.
We've seen an increase in...
And, and we've been seeing a substantial increase in the use of the credit card and the debit card. So we'll be bringing that, that, that's the appendix A that we would be bringing back to you. So if you want to think about it, and see if you're willing to do that or absorb it, it's, it's up to you for the next meeting.
Throw under the bus for forgetting.
Yeah, yeah. Four o'clock this afternoon.
Well, I've been telling you to, to remind me for two months to just talk about it, and I kept forgetting, and then today, somebody was paying with the credit card and I remembered, so, uh, yeah, that, but that's been thing that's been longstanding, that, that we've been working through, and it, and it has become a substantial expense for us, because we don't charge you at the credit card, then we have to move it over to either the water fees and spread across everybody, or just charge those individuals who are using it. Because, you know, you can pay online, or you can do the bank draft, which is free. Those things are free, but a lot, lot more people are using their cards, and it's, it's expensive to us.
And it's not uncommon. Counsel Smith?
Um, and of course, people are using more cards, they have a high incentive to do so. There's a cash back thing associated with almost every credit card that you can get, not realizing that the cash back really comes from you, me, from the merchants. So there's a strong, I, I predict that, you know, that incentives are working for credit card users. So, yeah, 3% seems like, yeah.
We're still thinking this. Yeah. Yeah.
Is there anything else anybody would like for the next meeting? I think you're on the right path.
Okay, then we'll bring a resolution adopting the, the budget and the appendix, like we do, have done in previous years. There's going to be some small clerical changes between now and then, but if there's anything major, then I'll bring it to your, your attention at the next meeting.
Sounds good, thank you, sir. Any other staff reports? No reports? Counsel Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a short break, short recess. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Anderson? We have a motion second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. I'll call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, under new business, is approval, disapproval of resolution number 2015-10, a resolution making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and approving the Silver City Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. I'm the sponsor, and this is, uh, this is one of the tools that was in our little toolbox when we did the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act in, actually in 2013. We, we've been putting, setting this in motion for, for quite a while now, and, and it's long overdue, but this is a, a good little thing, that I'll let Mr. Deans kind of go over some of the specifics of it, but to give people an idea of what we're doing is, we've set a map of, of the downtown area, and created this Metropolitan Redevelopment Act to, to, to allow us to, to work on a certain area that needs help. And what this does is it sets aside the appreciation of property values over time, and allows that, that incremental growth to be specifically designated for an area, and allow us to, to put that back into the area and, and keep it vibrant and moving forward. And just with that little introduction, if you wouldn't mind shedding some more clarity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You did a great job, right? Why don't we just like take, you know, count the votes, and we can... Let me, I will give you a little more background, I'm Charlie Deans, and I'm with the New Mexico Main Street Program, I'm the urban planning consultant for the State Economic Development Department and Main Street Program, and we provide technical assistance to our Main Street communities, and so I'm here on behalf of the Silver City Main Street Organization with giving you this information. But I also, one of my hacks is, as a consultant, Community by Design is my firm, and I was also the consultant retained by the Town of Silver City to lead the consultant team in drafting the plan and getting it adopted, and so I know the plan quite, quite well. But I thought since there's a couple of you who are new, and may not know much about what is a New Mexico Redevelopment Code and that state statute, that maybe just to provide a little context, and for the rest of you who were around in 2013, this will be a bit of a refresher course, but the New Mexico Redevelopment Code is a state statute that was adopted in 1978. That gives basically additional authorities to municipalities, really for their downtown areas and revitalizing and redeveloping their downtown areas. When that statute was written in 1978, there was one metropolitan area in the state of New Mexico, and that was the city of Albuquerque, so the city's been using this tool for about the last 30 years, pretty effectively, I'll talk a little bit about what they've, what they've been doing. So really, within the last 10 years, that there was an amendment to that statute that took out the population requirement, and so New Mexico Main Street, with our Main Street communities, have been using this plan and these tools quite a bit. So the first slide, I didn't do the PowerPoint presentation, we're going to stay old school on paper here, so I, there's a new handout that I think you should have in front of you. So that's what the code's about, and the second slide on that first page talks a little bit about these tools. And I want to talk a little bit about, before I get into the specifics on some of these tools, you know, in economic development, particularly in downtown revitalization, there's a truth and a phrase we use, and you hear all the time about, there's no silver bullet, and it's true, there is not. But what we can do is think of all of these as silver BBs, and just incrementally, there are small tools that at the end, and if we start using these special tools that the statute allows, it will start to make a difference, and it has made a difference in other cities. One of the, the largest tool in this, in this, this, the greatest BB we've got in this toolbox is really about creating public-private partnerships. This Redevelopment Code allows those things to happen. But, as you probably know, in the state of New Mexico, we have this thing called the anti-donation clause in the state constitution, and it really almost prohibits public-private partnerships as a result of that clause. And so, one of the things this statute does is that it gives flexibility around that anti-donation clause to really foster and encourage public-private partnerships, basically the town working with nonprofit organizations, or private developers, or the state working with private organizations and nonprofits, to be able to work out some tangible benefits that benefit both parties. So that is really, like I said, probably our best BB in this toolbox. Now, the rest of these, kind of these funding and financial tools, the statute allows a tax increment financing district to be approved, and I want to go into more detail on that, but this just lists the others, you can talk about property tax deferrals, revenue bond financing, because we went through sort of the B-word, the deteriorated conditions in the downtown area, there's opportunities for EPA and brownfield development because of that designation. So I'm going to move to the second page. If you're not familiar with, that graphic is just really taken out of the MRA plan. I mean, this is really, it was adopted twice, actually, the first time in 2010 as the Downtown Action Plan, and then later it came back and got adopted as a MRA plan, so that these tools would be available, and we went through that process in 2013. But if you're not familiar with this plan, it's worth a read, I mean, I think it's a really good plan, not because I led the consultant team that created it, but we had some really good people who were involved in working with us and writing the plan, and there's some really good projects and good ideas, there's a parking study in here, the, the document has a lot of things going for it, and I believe it's on the town's website and can be downloaded. So what I, so it's really now, we're talking about one of those tools under the state statute that the town can do, because you've adopted the MRA plan, is this tax increment financing district. And so that, on page two, at the bottom, the bottom slide there is really the TIF district itself, which is that purple line, is the same as the MRA plan area, that the two work together, and I'll talk a little bit about how they do work together shortly. Top of page three, this is just a really, I'm going to try, I'm, I'm not going to be able to do this in 25 words or less, but just, it's the concept of tax increment financing and the way it works in New Mexico, and the way it works under the Redevelopment Code, is that that blue area at the bottom of the graph, which is that baseline, okay? So the baseline, the property tax that is going to the town right now is the baseline, and that gets established by first, by the council, if you approve this resolution and we move forward, and it's the county treasurer who actually establishes that baseline of the existing property tax that's going to the town in their general revenue, which Mr. Brown has told me it's about $520,000 a year. Okay, it's not a lot of money, obviously, your grocery receipts tax is really where you're getting your financing for general revenue, but property tax is a little bit, well, that baseline gets established, and so this tax increment is only any increase, if it happens, in property taxes within that district, or the purple line. And so as property taxes just naturally may increase, properties get resold, or they get reappraised by the assessor, that increment goes into a special fund. So the town will, and it's 20 years, the statute says, this TIF district is only good for 20 years, it's a revitalization tool, and it expires at the end of the 20 years. So that small property tax increment goes into a special fund, the treasurer sets that aside, if, if there is one, but I'll, now I'll talk about, we did in 2013, New Mexico Main Street and Silver City Main Street worked with Bieber, the Bureau of Business and Economic Research at UNM, and they did a projection, basically do some, a sampling methodology for this district, it was about a 10% sampling methodology of the 440 parcels that are within the TIF district, we took about 10% of those, and we looked at five years, we went to the assessor, and they gave us five years of property taxes from 2007 to 2011, that was back, back a ways then, but, and so Bieber was able to make a projection based on that sampling... on that sampling methodology. And so that graph that you see there is basically what that increment, as it starts to accumulate over the 20 years. So at the bottom of that graph is still the baseline. The town's going to receive the $520,000 if we set the baseline tonight. And so that increment. Top of page four is actually the numbers in a graph, in a chart, the table. So again, this is based on a projection, and the increment is a pretty small increment. So of the 440 parcels within the downtown district, that first year money going into this little special fund is $8,310. Okay, that's just taking the first year and subtracting it from the property tax. So that first column on the left basically is what the increment will be each year as you go from that particular property value on, say, year 10, back to the baseline of the 10 previous years. So year 10, there would be $30,000 that would go into the fund. The column on the right simply shows the sum of, as that increment builds over the 20 years, with the potential total at the end of the 20 years of this increment going into the pot of $626,000. Now, that money is going to be used for projects in the plan, could be used for operational purposes, could be used to match grants. But I'm going to talk a little bit about what's the benefit then, why should we do this, which is on the bottom of page four. First, it's sort of simple. Because it's not a new tax, it just requires approval tonight by the city council. Since it's not a new tax, we don't have to sign petitions from property owners. You don't need to get, go to an election to increase this money. It's really just using the increment, and as property values increase, as revitalization happens, those property taxes will also go up. It uses the existing property tax increment. It is not a new tax. I put that in red to make sure it's clear to everyone, this is not a new tax or a new fee. It's just utilizing the existing property taxes. The funds that are generated from this district are spent in the district, basically. The funds can be used for the projects in the plan or for operational purposes. The city council still maintains control. The statute gives you control. You will be sitting as the Redevelopment Board under the statute, and you will decide how this fund is used and spent within the downtown district. So it's not new money, and it's not money that's going to go somewhere else, but it basically says, there's a commitment here about, we want something to happen in the downtown, so we're willing, as a city, as a town, to make a 20-year commitment to assure that there is sort of this little increment that's going to be promised for projects in the downtown area. And that helps developers. That helps, gives them some idea of your commitment, and they make more private reinvestment in their properties in the downtown. The last bullet is just trying to talk about the return on investment. By the town setting aside this small amount each year and revitalization happening, it will increase the grocery receipts tax in the downtown area, which is obviously your main source of money. So there's really going to be a return on investment by using this tool. The last slide is just looking at, you won't be the first, sorry, in the state. We have been doing this, the city of Albuquerque's had 11 TIF districts. Many of them have expired. They run their 20 years, but the city's been doing this for a long time. In the last 10 years that, or eight years that I've been with New Mexico Main Street, we've got six Main Street communities who have approved the TIF district, and we're working with a couple of others. So that really is kind of just an overview of both the state statute and this tool and how it can be used. You have a resolution tonight that will basically establish that district and also put in process the collection of that increment and putting it into the special fund. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Emerson?
Mr. Mayor, I really don't know to whom to address this, so it's a general question, which is, I can see that there's, you know, kind of small amounts of money that every year going through it. A fund, you speak of it as a fund, but then speak about the, sort of the accumulated amount at the end of 20 years. Is this kind of like an escrow or an impound account? Must it sit there for a while, or is it available by the body that's choosing to use it after 10 years?
You can start using that fund after one year.
After one year, okay, so there's no request?
Or you can make the decision, let's put it aside and put it into an interest-bearing account or something.
That was my next question.
And, you know, accumulate it and not touch it.
Okay, so it can be grown in a variety of ways.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Can I add just a little bit? I think, haven't some of these areas actually bonded with using this as the repayment so that they could do something even a little more quickly?
Only in the city of Albuquerque has used revenue bonds with their, with some of their tax increment where they've, you know, bonding companies get a little edgy about using TIF funds because it's not that, it's not used that much in New Mexico, first of all. And because it's not a new tax, there's just no guarantee, you know, how much the increment's going to be from year, year to year. So they typically like to kind of wait to see five or six years and what the performance is before they'll, but you can use it for revenue bonding, which doesn't require voter approval, to get a large sum of money, and then you can pay that off over the 20-year debt service time.
You know, just something to add to that, I do like how modest this projection is, actually. If you look at, on year 20, that it's, it's saying that property values are only going to go up 10%, which is actually considerably below the historical average on real property. So this is a very conservative amount, and it's just the pieces, the time value of money, it's as each little piece goes in there over time, it builds up quite nicely. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also not sure where this is directed to, at least one of my questions, but what I do have is, to Mr. Brown, is, how much will it cost the municipality to manage the special fund?
It won't cost us anything. We set up a separate fund, just like all the funds you just saw today. We set that up separate. You tell us how to handle that one individual fund, and that's how we take care of it.
And these funds can be used as matches for CDBG, which also can occur in that same district?
Yes, this actually brings to mind what we just did last year. Do you remember that the GEO bond was paid off? And we increased the tax to keep it the same rate as it was before? And we just dedicated it to the street fund? This is almost exactly the same thing, in that the only difference is, we didn't change our operating tax. You're just setting aside any future increased valuation, tax, tax that is generated because of the increased valuation. You're setting that aside to be used in that special district, just like you did with the road fund, which is used for streets within the town of Silver City. It's basically exactly the same thing, almost.
That's what I thought, it's good to hear you explain it that way for everyone.
You approve the budget just the same way as you would with this. You're still in control.
So the last question is, if this resolution is approved this evening, that fixes the baseline and what we currently receive, because there's nothing in here that I can read that fixes the baseline, but it's the actual act of passing or approving the resolution that will fix the baseline to the amount that was mentioned.
So let me provide the response to that. Good, yeah. So, tonight doesn't actually establish the baseline. It creates the district, and it starts the process to move it forward. What will create the baseline is, if you approve the resolution, it puts in the motion a letter, and the statute outlines this process, a letter from the town, presumably the mayor, to the county treasurer that says, we've approved the TIF district, please create the baseline as of, I mean, it could be tonight if you'd like. And it's the treasurer who formally establishes that baseline at the request of the town. And then he starts, and then a year later, he'll go back and he'll look to see, here's what we collected last year, and here's what we collected this year, and it's that difference that goes into the special fund. So we have not formally have established the baseline yet, but it is an administrative process that occurs next.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood, that you said with the resolution, we would set the baseline. So I was just trying to make sure that, because I kind of went through it real quickly and thought, well, it doesn't say it, so I thought by the act of passing it, if it's passed and approved this evening, that it does in a sense kind of give us a time range for setting the baseline. Am I correct?
It gives us the authority to work with the treasurer to set the baseline.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so now's the time to do it. Now that they've just finished valuations, now we can just identify the properties and the district at what valuations are, and then that's, that's the base for it. So now's the time to work with them, actually.
We ended up acquiring a couple of properties, and by virtue of doing so, reduced the property values. Any other questions? Is there anything that either one of you would like to add? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution Number 2015-10, a resolution making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and approving the Silver City Downtown Tax Increment Financing District.
Counselor Emerson?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-10, a resolution making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and approving the Silver City Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. Is there any further discussion? Just as a general comment, not only did I sponsor this, I also sponsored the 2013 MRA, and I am a big fan of this. I like to use creative means of financing many of the important projects, and I truly believe that we need to take care of downtown. It's one of the, the things that really separate us from our peers, making sure that we don't feel like just your normal, urban, sprawl, interstate-type town, and it really gives us a reason, it gives visitors a reason to get off the interstate and come visit us. And this is just a nice way of funding and giving back to this district without creating any added burden to the taxpayers. So I do, I want to make everybody well aware that I fully support this. Any further comments or discussions? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Aven Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-12, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for improvements to the water system in the Chihuahua Hill
This resolution authorizes us, authorizes us, authorizes us to submit an application for a loan to do some water line replacement in the Chihuahua Hill neighborhood. If we're able to secure this funding, we'll have basically replaced all the water lines except for probably, I believe, after going over this with Robert, there's about three or four small streets that we would not have completed. But the reason that we're going through this process, it's not because it's a hundred, it's a loan, completely 100% loan. Usually, it's a 75-25, 75% loan, 25% grant. We have the chance to get a 25-75, and really, that's the only way that I would really like to move forward with it, because there are some reverted dollars moving back towards the grant portion, and we're one of the few entities that are still on the list for this funding cycle. And so we're moving to get this in place so that we can qualify for the 25-75% process.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so can you put it in terms of numbers? Because somehow I missed that. I mean, I understand what you're doing, but I guess I didn't pick it up when I read it. Are the two numbers correct?
Yes, the total project is 726,000. We would, no matter what, we would put in 56,000 for design. The grants loan is 670,000. So it would be either 75% grant, 25% loan, or reverse, 25% grant, 75% loan. We would still like a normal grant, I mean loan, through the finance authority. I would still have to come back to you once we were given all the information and whether we were given the award, and at that point, I would only recommend we move forward if we're giving, given 75% grant of the 670,000. So I still would have to come back to you for final approval. This is just getting us in there to qualify for it, then they would give us the exact numbers, what we qualified for.
So is this the first time that we've applied for this particular drinking water?
We've submitted applications. We just put our name in the list many times. I believe this is the first time that I've actually been involved in one since I've been around, that we've actually gotten this far.
I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of Resolution Number 2015-12, authorizing and approving submissions of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for improvements to the water system in the Chihuahua Hill neighborhood.
Counselor Connaught?
Stated?
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-12, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for improvements to the water system in Chihuahua Hill neighborhood. Is there any further discussion or comments? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Aven Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of bid number 14-15-5, solids, de-watering facility, belt filter press.
Mayor and counsel, four bids were received for bid number 14-15-5, solids, de-watering facility, belt filter press. They were received on April 21st at 2:00 p.m. It is staff recommendation to award the bid to C and E Industrial Services for the base bid in the amount of $540,885.47 without grocery receipts tax. The funds for this money is Colonia Sponge. The funds for this money is Colonia's funding. It's part grant and part loan. It is budgeted for, it is in our preliminary budget. And then just to make a side note, that 50 cent increase that we were talking about would go to help pay the debt service portion of this project. I don't know if you noticed or not, on the second page, we did have a local contractor submit a bid. They did try to implement the 5% local preference. However, even with the 5%, the out-of-town contractor was still the lowest bid.
Is the recommendation to do this without GRT, or is that just a?
With GRT.
We want to include, this amount doesn't include GRT, but we want to.
Yes.
We want to make sure that we approve it with G, to include GRT.
That's correct.
Is there any questions? Counsel Aven Smith?
I read the recommendation from the engineering firm, and I wasn't really clear if there were any criteria about reputation of the contractors.
Did do a background check on the contractor, this contractor, because we hadn't worked with him before. And they've got a very good reputation, so we, he did do that already. Come in within budget and quality work.
Great, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of bid number, I've got to get back to the original page. Excuse me for a minute here. Of bid number 14/15-5, solids de-watering facility belt filter press, per staff recommendation to CNE Industrial Services, with a base bid of $540,885. Okay, I'm not doing this right. 540, comma, 885.47, to include GRT. Is that proper?
Plus GRT.
Plus GRT, okay.
Counsel Ray McSpitt?
I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion second for approval of bid number 14/15-5, solids de-watering facility belt filter press, per staff recommendation to CNE Industrial Services, base bid $540,885.47 plus gross receipts tax. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.